Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Recording in progress.
Ms. Gillman?
Yes.
Ms.
Approval of the regular meeting minutes for December 19, 2044.
Seventeen.
Which one?
Seventeen. Okay. That'd be progress, what process?
Now it should be regarding the process. If I'm looking at Hang On.
Regarding to progress.
Should be regarding the progress. The town is moving on. When I accept a motion to accept the meeting minutes with the correction. Number seventeen. Roca?
Ms. Gillman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorne?
Yes.
Mr. Trehill?
Yes.
Man, I had a stroke.
I'm kind of speaking on behalf of my father. His words don't come out right since he had a stroke. We're here tonight because of his sewer tap still. It's been over seven months. I'm just seeing where you guys are at on that.
I don't have an answer for you right now because I really don't have someone to install it. But I will have the girls look into it.
Because you guys took the money and accepted the payment for the
Understood.
Services, but no services have been done. I mean, you guys keep laying them off further and further, and that's kind of fraud, you know?
Well, I will, all I can say is I will look into this and I will have one of the girls or the utility person contact you. I'll see what we can do to I know
I mean, because if not, we need to get a refund on the payment for the services so that way we can proceed with building on his property in different ways with either a septic tank with aerators. I mean, right now he's paying every two weeks to have the septic pumped on his motorhome.
Will be presented to the board. We have another sewer issue, so maybe I can talk to them and see if, you know, they can fit them. I mean, we have one, a wider one that we had to pull out of trouble. I mean, out of Denver, they gave us a bid.
I mean, you can see the sewer tap, the existing tap that Derek had put in in the, in the Marshall's property. I mean, it's not hooked to the house or anything. It's just a clean out because they had an RV where they were cleaning it out, dumping the tanks. I mean, you can literally see it stubbed out of the ground. It's fifteen, it's fifteen feet from where it's at.
Where it's at. Somebody, it's got plates on it and they fall in the thing. Number one.
Let us look into this and then I will get back to you.
Yeah.
You want to give me a bid from the board?
Yeah, 719? 967? 3147, and that's my personal cellphone.
What are we doing, waiting for to hire someone or?
For the sewer line?
Yes.
So we haven't had the money and so
If you had this money.
We might be able to get it put on. Well, when he did pay for his tap, I wasn't here and the town did not have money.
But we are talking about ten months like you said.
No, 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 seven.
Seven months, but it was prior even the person that owned that property before had waited almost a year and a half, and it's still had not been done.
Yeah, I think he's waited long enough.
So it's almost two years that that property of 111 South Grimes has been waiting for a sewer tap. And in the meantime, you guys put three man camps over there on the edge of town with water, sewer.
Where?
Right on the edge of town, right there on the old highway. What is it? On Cedar Street? Where there's a three, three individual man camps that he made into apartments.
Like I said, I'll look into this because I wasn't here, but I will see what I can do for you, okay?
Can we make a decision to hire someone to take care of this as it always passes?
And like I said, I will look into this and then I will be back in contact with him.
When should we hear from you, but?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to bring up the sewer tap, this was a tap that was approved probably 21, 22. So it's over the year on the application. It's going to be out one year to get it installed. Now, it was back in 21, 22. I can pull me up, but this, it wasn't paid until probably
It was grandfathered.
Six, eight months ago by this gentleman.
It was grandfathered because I asked for it.
I guess he bought the property from the original person who bought it, and they had never paid for the tap. So we went ahead and transferred the application to him, and he ended up paying for it.
And then he paid for it seven months ago.
Yes.
And, Mayor, I'm not installing shit.
No, no, we're fine.
But literally, I got, I got a lot over there. I can't take a crap on.
Understood. No, I understand.
And working with us, I think I appreciate it, you know, working with us. Somebody tell me something.
Last time when you were here, we were just starting to get some funds, but yeah, I'll look into it and one of us will get back to you.
Appreciate it.
Can the council not vote to hire someone to get this man's thing done? It's been seven months, and we're going to put him off again?
Like I said, I would look into it and then I will get back to him and to the council and let them know.
Sorry.
Hey, we'll do our own thing.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for the time, Mayor.
Thank you. Sorry you've had to wait so long.
It is what it is. And if any town, it becomes available for water. I know we have a motorhome, but when it becomes available, I would like to be able to get water on that property too, please.
Understand, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On that, we have a high school that water. How did that happen?
Doesn't have water yet.
He doesn't have a tap?
Doesn't have water, tap, doesn't have gas, tap, doesn't have a sewer tap.
Okay. We'll move on to utility report.
Good evening. So the white Tahoe did get fixed. I have been driving that around. Everything's fine on it. I did take the tire off of the black Suburban down to Gerald. I have not received that back yet. So once he gets that back, we'll have that one going as well. But as for the month, the month went pretty smooth. The last three days, I've had, the last two days I've had help on doing meter reads. We got them all done. Now I just got to get the the radio reads done, which I'm going to do tomorrow. So it went really well, having an extra hand to to get that done. Went faster. I don't know. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Would you share with the board your training that you did with Diamond Maps?
Diamond Maps, yes. I did, I did have a training session with
Right.
Greg.
Colorado Rural Water?
Yes, and he also wants, wants to come back down. He was actually asking me yesterday if he could come back down and do some more training with me, but I told him this week wasn't a good week. So he wants to come back down and so I can do some more training on, on the Diamond Maps. And I have been using it, and it's working great. I love it.
He also wants to do a training session with the staff. And then he wants to do a work session with the board, so he comes show how Diamond Maps works.
It's really
It's a really nice program.
It is. It's a really good program.
The one that you did, that sewer locate?
Yep.
And then you put it in on Diamond Maps?
Yep.
And it's there. I didn't go back and check the water break that you had, but
It's there also.
So everything will, can be on there and they will have whatever maintenance they have done. It shows the sewer lines, the wire lines, the gas lines. So he would also like to give a demonstration to the board.
And also what I'd like to do too, when I have, when I have some free time, is go around and hit all the meters. So it'll actually show each meter for the house, each house in the whole town. And then we'll, we'll run the lines to it and it'll, it, it's a great, you'll have to take a look at it. It's great. Diamond Maps is great. So eventually it'll have, you know, the gas lines, the sewer lines and all. It's pretty much got a lot of the water lines already. But like I said, I would like to get it to where it goes into the meter itself, not to the house, but to the meter. So we'll know exactly where every meter is.
And that's just for the water?
That's just for the water.
But it shows the lines, the water, sewer, gas. It shows all the fire hydrants.
Hydrants, everything.
It shows like when they were doing the flushes to the fire hydrants, you know, then like a marginal that, you know, when they were flushed, it'll tell you the make of the fire hydrant. Gives a lot of, there's a lot of information that can be input on the, on the Simon map for the town of Aguilar. And actually, it shows the town of Aguilar from Google Maps. And I'm where all the lines run.
Yes. I believe it goes clear out to the sewer ponds too.
It does.
Yes, I believe so. If not, it will.
Is that one you did off Lynn Road? And it showed it going that way?
Yes. So, yeah. It's great. Yes, sir.
Where does Adam put the
Adam? That, he is out on, oh my gosh, I don't have his address. Yeah, he's on Lynn Road. I had to turn, his meter or his valve wouldn't turn off, so I had to go in and put a new valve in, so I had to dig it in order to get the valve changed out. I, I don't know if I put that in my report or not, but it was a shut-off replacement.
He had a leak in his crawl space?
Crawl space, yes.
For, it had been for quite a while.
Yes. But he's back on. It's, it's up and going. And then I just had an emergency run right over here on Spencer last week. It's fixed. It's done.
I do like the way you've added your hours on here. So it gives us a better idea of how long something's taken you.
That's what you asked for.
Yeah, I like the way you did it.
Great, thank you.
Bob, do you have your on here utility report for what is that? What was the one that man sent this? For the sewer pump?
Oh. The guy's name is Dave.
The Muldoon or something? He sent us all an email. But he's asked him if the board or I'm sure with him, with Rich, if they were interested in going out to see the one in Coke Town.
I was going to invite Frank to go to be on maintenance.
He can go on another hand, but
we have a sewer pump right down the hole.
Okay.
But everything else has been going good. I mean, the whole month was great. We got a lot done, a lot accomplished.
Who's supposed to clean the sidewalks? Other than the community center, the library, the park? Who cleans that? We got common property, and we're supposed to clean the sidewalk?
Well, back in the day, I remember they used to have a four-wheeler with the little plow on it. You know, they used to clean the sidewalks, would do a sweep that way and back. And, but it used to be, I know, I don't know about how they've done it before, but I know that
The city had a John Deere mower with the snowplow on it.
When we had Eddie O'Gee and Candy, they used to be out early in the morning cleaning the sidewalks.
I've been taking, taking care of the community center. And in front of the post office, the library, yeah. And actually a couple of guys in town have been actually getting there over at the post office before I do. So I'm not exactly sure on who it is, but
He was just asking me about a four-wheeler with the plow on it.
I wanted to get that tractor over here because I know exactly what tractor, I don't know who said it, but there's a, there's a tractor over in the boneyard with the blade on it, so I want to get that over here and see if I can't get it, get it going again. If I can get it going again, then, then we'll use that to plow the sidewalks.
Yeah, we need to get those sidewalks.
But you know, that brings up another issue that all the property owners on Main Street should be cleaning the sidewalks in front of their property. You're not doing that.
I don't have time. I'll start.
That's where you are in the problem.
I know, I know you're going to say that.
Anyways, I just thought I'd
Yeah, I'm going to get that thing over here. I, I think next week I'm pretty much, you know, I can probably get that over here and start looking at it and see, see what it's going to take to get that going again.
You know, another thing is probably finding a lake that's riding water or if you're having
Maybe that one off that tractor might work. Look at it. You know, I haven't, I haven't looked into that, but yes, I would like to get something going. Yes, I do. I do know that. No, no, that's a diesel. Yeah, I know that. I think your dad told you that already. Yeah, yes.
Do you have any public comments?
Sorry.
Eddie?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Or unless
Anybody else?
Question?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kim, I apologize. You'll step forward.
Bob Romero, you brought up this
Did he just answer your question?
Yeah, well, I had a fall out there. Luckily, I didn't hurt myself. I was going to the post office.
Okay.
And I had a fall, but fortunately I didn't get hurt. But you know, there's people that have had falls out there that got hurt and had to go to the hospital. And nine years ago, I've been here 11 years now. Nine years ago, I had a fall and I had to go to the hospital for four days, you know? That was about nine years ago. But it is dangerous, and it was around 11 o'clock, you know? Of course, Diane wasn't working that day. She was a substitute. She said she'll go out there and put more salt on, on the ice, you know? But I just want you to know that I had a fall out there, but I didn't injure myself. Didn't, luckily, I didn't get injured. But I did have a fall out there nine years ago, which I had to go to the hospital for four days.
I'm sorry to hear that. We will see what we can do just to start taking care of our sidewalks.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In your board packet, you should have Ken Torres's project report.
Ken Torres is still contracted with us?
He's finishing some of the stuff he's had before with SGM and USD and he's done building inspections because we don't have a building inspector.
On the building inspector we went through a meeting three months ago, possibly, that the building inspector for the town inspects foundation or framing. Wasn't that what the determination was, that our building inspector inspects the framing of buildings?
I thought it was all areas.
That's what I got, but
I didn't hear you.
I said I thought it was all areas.
A remark.
I said he just doesn't do plumbing or electrical.
Okay, doesn't do plumbing or electric, so mainly it's foundation and
Building.
Building, framing.
Framing, the rug, I mean.
Okay, so my question would be, how come we're using Ken Torres to do the inspection of plumbing? Are you sure?
He's not supposed to be doing it.
Okay, now, if I could show you a document that shows you that he's doing that.
You guys should look to the board. I'd like to see it. Because he should not be doing more electrical.
I do have the plumbing inspectors sign off from the state if I need to grab that.
So will you make a copy of his report so that the boards can all have a copy?
Which report?
The one that you said you have Ken Morris?
No, I didn't know there was going to be something coming up here for the mercantile I went in and posted on their wall is their report to go on that photograph. That's plumbing. We sat here in council and came up with whenever the man applied for the job as a building inspector. We sat here and defined what the responsibility of the co, or the building inspector was. And I thought that they said it wasn't the foundation, it was just the framing of the building. So now for some reason, he's inspecting plumbing. And the big thing for me was, as in the last meeting, was the council suspended his contract. So how is a man doing work like this that after we said no? How is he still doing work on things that we said no until we get a new contract and the council approves it? And it's easy to get that. I could bring in copies or whatever you want, but go and look at the bulletin board at mercantile or at the
If he did that two days ago, he just signed off on the final inspection from the Colorado State Plumbing Inspector, correct?
What's on the bulletin board is probably their certificate of occupancy because he signed off on building the foundation. So now they're good to open business and it shows how many people can be in there at once, and it was
They gave their occupancy standards.
He signed off on that photograph, a plumbing matter.
The plumbing, state plumbing inspector signed off on all the plumbing. He's the one who inspected it and signed off on it. They had to bring me the paperwork.
Okay, well, I
And that was from, hold on, so.
I didn't bring the paperwork. I didn't know that this was going to come up, that had no issues other than what the board had decided. I still hadn't seen a contract on him, a new one. That shouldn't be happening with anything. If you want any work here, finish your contract and let us vote on. If not, stop using him.
Any other questions? Comments?
The only thing I can say is when we talked about Ken Torres's contract, talking to the lawyer, and he was going to modify it so he would only go in grants and anything with the augmentation pump. Thought that that's what we had agreed to.
Thank you, Bob. That's
I'm going to go back and I'm going to review that video. And then I'll talk to Adam so we can get that contract corrected.
Multiple times what the board votes on does not happen, and the attorney's one of them, the board had voted that I would be included in the conversations with the town attorney. That hasn't happened one time. I don't get contacted on things that the other board members seem to know about. And it seems like there's more and more calling around and doing town business by telephone or email, which does not include me. And I, I heard what you said at the one meeting, that you're allowed to send out a mass text and then each councilman respond to you. I don't read the sunshine wall the same as you. Every time that happens, it's a violation, and the remark I made to you about not contacting me was about exactly that. It's still going on. And it shouldn't be, and the council doesn't remark about it. You know, the whole fight that we had for three years to get to where we had a new council and a new mayor, and it turns out that we're doing the same thing as before. We haven't even tried to get a town haven't even tried to get a town party in here. I mean, we're months down the road, why?
I don't see where the questions that you're asking are under project report.
It did say.
If you wanted to talk about personnel, you could have asked them to put it on the agenda for where we were at with hiring, the hiring process. But I think if we're done with project report, we need to move on. We have a lot to cover. Anybody else have anything else to add?
Was that the entire project report, Ken Torres?
What was on there? Yes. Are we gonna hear the project report? We have the augmentation pond, Mayor Matt, with USDA, SGM, and they are going to sign the final completion pay after accepted to the county of Aguilar for review. We will do a final inspection of the reservoir sometime in February, water storage and chlorination building. The county of Aguilar accepted Black and Beach proposal for the design. The information was sent to the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, that an engineer had been selected and forwarded their proposal. The CDPHE required B&amp;B to update their PNA, which is project need assessment, to get the process going. Black and Beach will have to work on a rate study for the town. And attended C.T.R. meetings for the issues on safety of railroad cutter. And met with or talked to Greg Goffey for planning director with C.D. And he's working on trying to incorporate Aguilar for roadway improvements. And he will come to Aguilar to meet with the board in the near future.
Okay, so Ken Torres is now our C.T.R. representative?
If I remember correctly, I said that he had been talking with C.D. through the county. And he was doing, or Bob and I met with Ken and C.D. on the bus, that bus thing and things like that.
Again, why would that be whenever the council suspended his contract? Here it is again. I'm not seeing how the mayor has the authority to assign these jobs out to someone that the board said definitely suspend his contract.
I thought we had agreed to revise the contract and not suspend it.
Well, we were suspending it for revision through the attorney. He was supposed to, this was supposed to come to us like two months ago.
He gives contract with revisions.
Who did? We were going to, we were going to say, they were going to, the whole thing was for him to revise it so that it would be, it would go according to how he's using, instead of using his name or the company.
Right. That, and it was approved and with the revisions that the attorney would do.
Basically, there's one line in that contract that says, any other things needed by the town that was objectionable, because that didn't give the council, I mean, at any time, he could be put on any assignment without us knowing. We wouldn't have an idea of the price. All we would do is whenever a bill comes up for Diamond Teeth for $5,000, we would pay it. The council wouldn't know what the work was for. And on the same bill, what was objectionable to me was there would be payments for him for the same month for like $1,500, making it look like that's all we were paying the guy until I figured out that Diamond Teeth was actually his company that we're spending thousands off. And we don't know what that money's for. We have no idea. That one line in that contract made it to where that could be done, such as this thing on the train on the C.D. I didn't, the council didn't decide to hire him for that. Someone else did. And I think we need to get it in order so the council have notice what's going on with the town's money and who we're hiring.
Are we finished?
Yes.
Hey, can we move on to office report?
So as of now, the town's not gonna be making any more payments to Robert Cap for any outstanding invoices. The town has begun the process of considering.
Would you keep it down, please?
Sorry, no. Other legal remedies to recover additional damages based on the breach of contract suffered by this.
This was in reference to when they, the board terminated Robert Cap's contract. We have not been paying, I know Angela and I had run back and forth on this about him making payments to Robert Cap. It started to, and, um, at some point, we just said, no, we're not going to. And when we got the attorney, we sent this to the attorney and let him know that we didn't feel the town should have to pay for something they didn't receive. Because I spoke to the auditor and he said that most of the materials that was even supplied to him, that he couldn't even use. Pretty much paid the $95,000 and did not get anything out of it. So the possibility of a lawsuit though from Robert Cap. So my question to the board is, do we want to move on with this stop payment?
I don't.
I, I, I just can't see payment if we didn't.
We should get it taken out.
We didn't.
They did $90,000.
Plus, they're still charging us actually 32 and now it's up to $42,000, I believe. And so they've already been paid $97,790.
But wasn't in his talk to us last meeting that it's us who didn't supply the paperwork, that it's impossible to put this together? And there's a, uh, there's a possibility that the USDA asks for our money back, that we are in dire situation over this?
Are we talking about Robert Cap or who are we talking about now?
Is that included in this?
This is the one that the auditor bit or the bookkeeper that was getting paid five grand a week?
I thought they were companies.
No. Apparently, this was something that was recommended to the board or something and they voted on him. I don't know. But anyway, with this.
$5,000 a week that we had to get into contact on.
Remember that lady, among, we found out she was in Canada? That one. So what I, we're asking is if it's okay to proceed with not making them, we haven't made payments. And so I just sent it to the attorney because they, they were calling and getting pretty nasty with the ladies in the office and that's unnecessary. And I just told them to tell them, well, they want, they kept saying they want their money. And I said, and we want our, we want in our audits too. We wait it.
Do you need a motion?
I do. I need a motion from the board to stay with not paying them. And the attorney from this letter, he's willing to move forward if there's any legal ramification that will come out of this.
I motion to continue the non-payment.
I second. Is Jim Ray part of this?
Who's Jim Ray?
Isn't he one or?
No, Jim Ray.
Ray, R-E-Y?
No. No, I don't know. You know what? Somebody said that apparently between Jim Ray and Robert Cap, how, I don't know, how did that?
So Jim Ray is our auditor. He's the one that's working on the budgets now. And he was trying to get, Krista was from Robert Cap. She was trying to get the books in order to send to Robert, uh, Jim Ray, to get the audits done. But $97,000 later, everything she said was useless. So Sarah has been getting everything together for the budget. It didn't get to Jim Ray and he's gotten to 19, 20, 21, and it's on 22, 23, and 24 right now. So Jim Ray is still doing our work and he's the auditor.
He, I spoke to him earlier today and was checking on the audits and he said, all we're waiting on is bank statements from BMO or Bank of the West. Everything else, and once he gets those, then he'll put them in on, um, 2022 will be completed. So can I get a motion not to pay them? Mr. Romero, would you second? Bruce, and, um, did you get a vote? Can I get a vote?
Ms. Gilman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thornd?
Yes.
Mr. Trell?
Yes.
Anything else on office report?
I'd just like to say, my due diligence are down to 14,000.
We have one more item for you. I know everybody's been waiting for this, but we met with the CBI yesterday. So she said, a girl's reviewed bank statements with her, answered her questions. She was here like, like three hours, three and a half hours or something. And she did say that it would take maybe up to two years for the completion of the investigation. But USDA did supply her with a lot of information. And she, they're only investigating from '22 through, uh, '24.
That's it?
No. There, actually, this whole investigation stems from the $155,000 that, nobody knows where it went to. That's where that investigation, because USDA contacted the CBI on that. And I have a way.
Both the status of that $155,000, we don't know where it's at. Okay, I accept that. Are we paying it back or are we?
That is my next question would be, when we get down to M. Under you? That's at the end of the. Under you.
Was it SGM or was it?
Yes. Both. Well, there are several people. But this one's SGM. That's the one that with the $155,000.
And there's others on top of that, like included in the $155,000. Or was the $155,000 the total?
That was the money that the USDA released to the town. And they, it wasn't used to be paid to the contractors on the Ogcon. That's when SGM walked off the project. And SGM was trying to get their money because they pretty much completed their share.
So that $155,000 actually covers several companies not paid?
Actually, it was just SGM.
Just SGM, so we're, how much then are we, do we owe to the other companies?
You remember the gentleman that came that day and he was asking for $750,000?
I remember him very well.
That one. We're still, I met with them yes, yesterday? Yes.
But it comes down to, we don't know how much we owe to who over the $155,000.
That, $155,000, that goes to SGM only.
One company, yeah. But does anyone here know how many other companies we owe and the amount that we owe each company?
There's where, where Ken Torres has been working with me, trying to break up because he was on the contract and he was assigned to the project. But for now.
For pay, payouts, I mean, I know that.
But no, for now, it's only them, the meetings that I've had with them have only been, they've only invited SGM, Sarah, me, and USDA. They're not, you know, nobody else is included. I was able to include Andy, yes, Adam, yesterday. I've asked him so that he could listen in because there's a a lot of legal.
Isn't this a situation where our mayor pro town should be there also?
No, he wasn't invited.
So we have the mayor, mayor pro town.
This is the agreement that they want, this was their stipulation to come back to the table, was that it would be the mayor and Sarah's included because she takes the notes and on the mayor, USDA, and SGM. There is no, there was no water attorney, there's no project manager, there was nobody, even Adam, because we had a discussion because I wanted him to be on there. But it was just, they called it a reintroduction engagement.
Well, my understanding of government is our mayor pro town is supposed to be involved in these things, so we're not dependent on one person's ideas or thoughts or words. We have two people. And from the start, he has been involved with this, yet he's not invited to the crucial meetings. I, it's just odd to me that. I don't know how the, one of our, our mayor pro town is not invited.
Well, we have a meeting in February. They're, they're letting me add even the water attorney because I've asked for the water attorney.
So basically, SGM is the one who's letting you know who can and cannot attend the meeting?
I, I can't actually speak for what happened before.
No, I'm just talking about.
And no, wait, and this is where this is all standing. So, you know, they're like, I, I even said to them, and Sarah's my witness, because I said, at one point, I said, look, you don't have to like me and I don't have to like you, but we have to work together and we need to complete this project, is what I said. Because, you know, it sounded like they didn't want the water attorney there, they didn't want this one there, they didn't want, you know, I asked even for Adam or and Andy or one of them to be on there. And they're like, no, no, you know, it was just supposed to be the little group.
But it looks like on our part, if we only have one person there, we're exactly where we were before. It's a dictatorship with one, where a council of six with the mayor. And only the mayor attends. And somehow that just doesn't set right.
Then I think write a letter to USDA and.
I'm addressing the council here.
I'm just saying, you know, I'm going, I'm doing what they're asking. I'm just saying, you know, I'm going, I'm doing what they're asking of me so that we can get this project completed. We need to get this completed by April.
So because.
Or March.
Had something completed, the town's not being able to have proper representation at these meetings.
Are you saying I'm not properly representing the town?
Should be more than one dictator. No, I'm not saying that you're not capable of doing your part, but it should not be the one person thing. The same from the start has been three people. Now they're dictating to us that we can't have a second opinion in there as our mayor pro town? And we're accepting that?
Are you asking me?
Well, I thought that too. I was talking to.
Well, I, I, I already gave you my response, Vernon, and I'm not sure what it is that you're so unhappy about. Because I, you know, I'm doing the best I can to get done what wasn't completed before.
This again, and I'll say it, this is a council of six people. And a mayor. A lot of these decisions seem to be withheld from the council who is supposed to be making these decisions.
Okay, I vote town to include Mr. Barino as mayor pro town in the next meeting.
Wow.
And if there's nothing else, can we move on to the old business? Ready? Code enforcement.
How's it going?
I assume you're Zachary?
Correct.
Hey, go ahead and tell the board a little bit about yourself.
Okay, well, my name is Zachary Martinez. I'm originally from Pueblo. I moved here back in twenty seventeen. Twenty eighteen, I moved to South Dakota, then I just recently moved back here a year ago. I really don't have too much experience in the code enforcement itself. I did, I was doing a lot of utility locating in South Dakota for a year. Other than that, most of my experience is labor construction. So I'm more than willing to learn what I have to learn to fit the position.
So you're somewhat familiar with construction, right?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
How long did you work in construction?
I've been doing construction for about five years now.
With electrical employment or?
Um, no, not that specifically, no.
Concrete?
I was building houses, doing foundations, doing a lot of framing and right now I'm a owner, well, I'm a, to owner of two companies. One is flooring and painting and the other one's for auto detailing. And so most of my experience is just in framing and stuff like that.
And for your remark, I'd like to follow up on that. Now, his position if he's hired would not be electrical employment? Or would it be? Am I missing something?
I'm just asking you questions about his background, not.
It's for code enforcement.
Right. But it's.
But if he was to see something is working.
Right, yeah. I'm just wanting to see some of his background.
What would the duties of code enforcement be here then? Going around writing citations for work that needs to be done in yards?
Sorry.
No, you're okay.
Do you understand it is a part-time job?
Yes, yep, yep, correct.
You have a full time job, right?
Um, yeah, doing my own, yeah. Yeah, me and my brother, we do construction, so.
If you had a problem with an individual, how would you handle it?
Um, well, I would try to figure out what the problem is and if there's anything that I could do about it, then I'll do whatever I have to do to make the individual happy. If there's nothing that I could do about it, then I'll just come to, I guess, whoever my boss is and talk to them and see what we can do about it.
So you know, it can be a difficult job at Tom, correct?
Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm sure I've had worse. Working with other contractors is also not that easy, so.
Code enforcement would be more than just with contractors.
Oh, no, I'm sure. Yeah, no, of course, yeah.
Now, you will be able to enforce the code regardless of the person's position.
Correct. I don't really, I don't have any, anybody here besides the family that I brought, so I don't know anybody personally.
Have you seen one of them?
No, I have not.
That's what you're applying for.
To the other one.
Okay.
These are pretty straightforward. Is there anything there that you don't think that you'd be able to do?
No, no, that's all straightforward and I think it's something that I definitely can do.
You pass a drug test?
Yep.
You can't pass a drug test, right? And the reason I'm asking this is because the person that applied before didn't say anything about that or talk about it.
Yeah, you know, yes, I can, I can.
Vacations?
Vacations? We do have a judge. Still, right? I mean, you keep paying him, but he's all on board. But he has meetings on the way he has.
We haven't had anybody to issue tickets to.
Yeah, he'll give me a list of court dates and the judge bill and you can get them all put out on the calendar. So then if he issues a ticket, then there's no way to issue.
I'm for the position being filled. It's something that we've needed for a while now. Is there other applications for the same position?
Yes.
There's another one right there on your packet.
Let's have Marshall here too, so I didn't know which was.
As soon as possible.
Since D, the control business D.
Oh, no, that's not the one. But there is another application.
Okay, I see that.
Any other questions for Mr. Martinez? Mr. Thorndyke?
So far, everything looks like he's capable.
Um, what are you guys paying hourly?
Not hourly, was it hourly or was it?
The last person they did was fifteen.
No, I think it was fourteen, wasn't it? Was it fifteen?
And he said he would work for fifteen.
Um, well, I know that I have good worth ethi- ethics. I'm a reliable person and I run my own companies. So I mean, I know how working with the, the community and other individuals is. So I, I would, I'm asking twenty dollars an hour.
With the economy the way it is anymore, I mean, we're going to have to start paying someone something. No one can make a living at fourteen dollars an hour. The dollars pay more than fourteen.
But this is part-time, you know.
Yeah. But we, we need a person in this position because of the shape of the town. And unless we're willing to pay someone to work, I wouldn't go to work fourteen dollars an hour. And I wouldn't expect anyone else to either.
But do we have it in the budget?
Well, that's.
We don't have the budget right now to do that.
But this is an income-producing position.
He's learned, he's willing to learn this position. He doesn't have the background on this position. So I'm saying, you know, fourteen dollars an hour, you don't have to leave town, you don't have to drive anywhere. Use the company vehicle, you don't have to pay for transportation. You don't have to do a lot of that. So right now, I say fourteen dollars an hour.
And I said.
That's what we can afford. Fifteen dollars an hour is what we can afford.
I've been to the grocery store and to the gas station, fourteen dollars an hour is just an insult for someone.
I'm not trying to insult him. I'm just saying what we can afford in the budget.
I haven't heard anyone that does the budget say.
If you were offered the position with the theme, the start, we got to start somewhere. I mean, would you be negotiable to that?
Um, I think that's something that I would probably want to think about.
Would there be a raise after probation? I mean, is there some kind of.
We could revisit it. And you know, like you said, it would be, if he's issuing citations, some fines are being given out, you know, it's generating income.
Um, we could do fifteen. I would like to prove to you guys that I'm worth more than that though. Just it's, it's not enough. I know that it's in, it's in city, it's in town and it's not far, but this is, I have more bills than fifteen dollars an hour, so.
How about if we consider percentage of money's brought in with the citations that the goes out in the court?
Well, that would be something that we would have to revisit. And you're talking about making that like a building inspector type thing. Well, that would be something that would have to be changed, correct?
Thanks to me, this is.
That'll be a lot different though, because with the citation, people have an opportunity to clean it up or fix it.
And if they do that before the fund and if they show the correction, I know the town of Pueblo or the city of Pueblo does that. If they issue you a citation and you correct it.
Yeah, that's so much time to.
Your court date.
Yeah.
Then there is no fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, and that's the difference between the building inspector and the.
That's kind of like you were saying.
I know, but what I was thinking is fourteen, fifteen bucks an hour. To me, to me, that's. But if we can get funds from the citations running in there. You can get a percentage of it. I say that we revisit it and see how things work out.
Well, I say that we remember that there's also someone else in, in the room that's waiting to be interviewed.
And I was also going to ask if you had another application for that.
Mr. Thorndyke, what were you going to say?
I was going to say that the board really doesn't have any idea what we can afford.
Uh-uh, no.
We don't have clues. We don't have the numbers of I do have for December what the numbers were given. But if you go through the budgets, the way that they are and the way the account should be set up, it says eighty-two thousand property tax, hundred twenty-two closing, twenty-one hundred for, twenty-one thousand for attractors, seventeen thousand, five hundred sales tax. But we don't know what account that goes into. We don't know what other it's being spent. And as Mr. Romero, it says, that's low money. I mean, and we don't, we need to pay to get someone even to work here. And my thought is, it's an insult to ask a man to go to work for fourteen dollars an hour when they're home and put food on his table. But as counsel, we don't know what to.
That's what I'm saying. We don't know what we can pay.
Right. And until.
I can tell you the ladies in the office are not making twenty an hour.
I do know that and I fought for them and I fought for them whenever we took the insurance from them, which was supposed to be a raise. I object to what they're being paid. I think that they should be paid more. But I don't know what can be paid.
See, that's something that we have to, like you said, we have to go back and look and see what can be, but that's going to have to be at a different time.
Right, but we can't we can't insult people with the amount of money that we're willing to pay.
Well, it's, it's not an insult. Don't disrespect.
So I think that Zachary said, you know, he's willing to work at this rate.
Yeah, of course.
He didn't say he was going to work for free. I mean, he's willing to give the town an opportunity to see where we're at on the wage and, and like you said, after.
That's really why most people call probationary period.
The ninety days.
But going into it, people usually know if there's a raise coming at the end of probation. For him, I would like to know if we're offering fifteen right now, or we'll give him the ninety days or whoever takes the job. I mean, that, the council should know what's coming.
I don't know. I guess we'd have to see what income was generated with citations.
I think that's what we should have done before we even put out for the position. Knowing what we could pay.
Well, right now, it stands at fifteen. We have another person to interview. And then we can bring it back. We can research and see what.
So we bring it back, we all look at everyone's pay.
It's not trying to insult you, but you shared with us that this isn't going to be your own income. So
Yeah.
You know, that kind of lifts the burden from the town.
Well, I also.
Where we would revisit after your probationary period.
Yeah, of course.
And then we'd have a little bit more. I know we have a budget to approve.
Building inspector needs to be more experienced with code enforcement. Both haven't looked good to for the position.
Okay.
Anything else?
Are we gonna table this, or are we gonna?
Think about it.
I don't know. I, you know, the board can decide if they want to vote now or what their.
We've still got to look at the funds, right?
Please agree to, if they agree, the person agrees fifteen, then we gotta pull them report and see what's the pass.
Code enforcers, well, before that I knew of, it was the marshal who needed of positions. But I don't know what.
He was making minimum wage, the last code enforcer, and he did code enforcement, emergency, and a car, hillbilly inspector, but it was. And I think at the time that was fourteen.
It's fourteen sixty-five, I think, before.
Yeah, it was, yeah, but it was thirteen something fourteen, but it wasn't.
If you want to guys just take time to think it over and get back on this, or?
We're trying to drift away from what was before. I know, I know I keep saying this, but people need to be paid for what they do.
Or should we just pull the report to see what we can afford in that half of them?
That's kind of, yeah, that's.
That would be my thought, too, that if we don't know what we could afford, and there's two people in here, been here fourteen years.
They're not forgotten, right?
So how long do we table this? Or are we going to table it?
Oh.
I was, I was gonna bring up workshop, middle of next month, and stuff that we will cover tonight.
Well, I was gonna ask the board to have another board, and in the earlier part of February, we have a lot that needs to be addressed, and we need to have more than one board meeting until we can get all these issues resolved. And all these other issues are about generating income to the community. So, you know, if you want to do that and wait, you know, another week or two, and I thought maybe the first week of February, to ask, you know, to have another regular board meeting so that we can cover some of these issues.
Like they in time, and I'll make a motion that we do that.
Second.
February.
Thank you, sorry.
You're welcome. I just didn't want to just keep standing there like. Oh, my. The second week of February.
I'd like to apologize to you guys. We haven't got enough.
All right. Well, we don't know where we're at, really.
Right. That's why I want to apologize to you guys. We gotta get rid of this.
Er, when it out, February is our thing.
When is our?
Or we can do it February on, no, the thirteenth.
We have a workshop somewhere around there, right? Second, second.
Nothing happens, given. The workshops have not even, haven't had any for quite a while.
Yeah, that's another thing. Yeah, that's one of the things.
Well, I'm saying we need to have a regular board, another two, two a month, so we can get all these issues resolved.
So the next, so the, the February?
Thank you.
At what time is it? And then the workshop at five?
Thirteen to five.
Yes. So then we have the workshop at five o'clock, and then the meeting at six. Is that correct?
Yes. Other than things on the workshop, we need to sit down and say what we want to talk about. We don't want to be opening it up to the public if we have other things we need to cover.
I mentioned that to you all, and I told you there's a difference of having a workshop, and that's entirely for the board, and it's open to the public, but not for public client, but you can also do town hall meetings where you engage with the public.
So the workshops aren't part of public engagement?
No, because usually the workshop is when the board gets together and they work on, you know, several issues.
And I was under the impression that the workshops are going to be an opportunity for the community to speak to us on what they needed.
Yeah, well, that's, it's the same thing, but it's just called the town hall meeting. So then that way it's open, and you can have the public engagement, and the workshop is so that the board gets to work on issues at hand. Mr. Romero has been wanting to address the employee, is it employee handbook?
Employee handbook.
For, you know, several months, and.
And then we have the ordinance was also that needs to be addressed.
Well, that's a part of why I want this regular, another board meeting in February. I know, you know, we can have two a month till we get everything situated. We just have a lot on our plate that we need to get addressed.
Also, we need to get these labels up to par as far as finances, too. That should be put on the workshop. Well, on what we can afford to pay in-house first. We need to find out how much we can pay.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so let's go ahead. Will we table the code?
So we're table the code enfor, code enforcement.
Yeah. The thirty, February thirteenth. Zachary, do you hear that?
Yeah.
What are we gonna do with the workshop? We're gonna talk about zoning, we're gonna talk about employee handbook. We need to talk about zoning because people want.
So, do you want to do that, Mr. Romero, at the workshop?
The zoning part. Yeah.
We're gonna need more time than that, then.
Wait.
Well, just one, one item.
Vernon.
The workshop, just one, not two.
Vernon wants to do, so do we do that on a different date, so that he, he said, you know, where it's community engagement?
Community engagement is quite often workshops are going to be where we loaded all this, and I'm hearing what you're saying, but we do need an opportunity for the community to speak to us somehow.
So originally, originally based, the workshop where we have the first half hour for the board, and then the second half hour was for the community. And we still want to keep that.
If we do it in that order, because if we do it the other direction, then we're limiting the community into a thirty-minute time period. If we do it to where we discuss our things first, then if the community doesn't engage with us, then we could further our talks. But I think it's important that we involve the community.
So if we do, if we, if we keep it the way it is, we're only going to be, my, my opinion, only, we're only going to be able to discuss maybe one subject at a time.
Right. It's only one of you. My recommendation would be a half hour for the workshop and a half hour for community engagement.
Okay, so we have the date for five P M. and six P M. on February thirteenth. Correct?
Yes.
Can we get a motion to approve?
I think we already have one. I think it was Mr. Thorin motion, and those seconds.
Broca.
Ms. Gellner?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorin?
Yes.
Mr. Trejo?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Romero tractor.
Okay, um. We have got the I think called bids or whatever, three different, three different tractor companies. The first one that was presented to us was the one that the insurance guy bought from Rustlers out in eastern Pueblo. And their price for just a tractor alone was a, one in longer was twenty thousand nine hundred. And the delivery for that would be five hundred bucks to get down.
So it, so you're talking about the same place the insurance company?
Yes.
So when the insurance company sent us the paperwork, they said that it was free delivered, right?
I called them, they didn't say it was free delivered.
The delivery was included.
That's what I'm saying, free delivered.
If it's included.
With the price that.
They sent us.
So we go by what? If we go by what the insurance company said, then it's free delivery.
Okay.
And all we, if we, if the board went that route, then we only have to decide when we want to receive it.
Yes.
I missed something. Has this been discussed on the tractor? I don't remember conversation on it.
No, we just looked at it.
It was.
And they decided to wait. They didn't want to just pick the one the insurance company sent us.
When did that happen?
Last minute, last minute. So they have a price of twenty thousand nine hundred for the tractor, the loader was.
Exactly. The one in Pueblo.
Yeah, it's Topar, isn't it?
Yeah.
This Topar's got one here, too, for.
They also have a bid from Topar.
Do I need to say anything to you? I mean, I said, do I need to say anything to you?
Yes.
No. Bruce says he can't hear me. Topar has a tractor, twenty thousand nine hundred needy with a loader. And I also asked them to include a brush hog, two thousand two hundred forty-nine ninety-nine. Which brought the price to twenty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. That's Topar. And they would charge a hundred and fifty bucks to deliver. And. Then.
How much to deliver?
Hundred and fifty.
And this is Topar in Trinidad?
Yes. And I talked to another company called.
Kioti?
Um, they have this in, in the west of Pueblo, called True Value Traders and Emeralds. They have a brand new tractor with a brush hog for seventeen thousand five hundred and thirty-two. Right? But they charge three seventy-five per mile, and it's about a hundred miles from here to there. They're talking a good four hundred bucks. Just on the delivery launch from there. Then they also have a used tractor. It's a two thousand sixteen. You want fourteen thousand for the used tractor and making forty-five for a four-foot brush hog for a price of fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, eight hundred and forty dollars. Like I'm saying, they need to charge three seventy-five per mile for delivery. That's four different tractors that now should be considered.
They don't have the hours listed on here for the operation.
What kind of operation?
For how long it's been operating?
Under use one.
They keep hours on the vid.
The used one.
Yeah, but I mean, how many hours does use one have? I mean, they could have ran that thing into the ground.
Three hundred and seven hours.
How long?
Three hundred and seven hours.
Monica, I think you need to sit between those two.
I don't know, but that one.
We're loudly discussing, not physically arguing.
No, we're not hollering, we're discussing.
And the one for seventeen thirty, seventeen five thirty-two, a brand new.
So that, um, brush hog or whatever it's called, here it says rotary, that's eighteen forty-five for that?
Yep.
And the other one's charged on twenty-two forty-nine ninety-nine on October?
Yes. Maybe not Topar charges the delivery fee. Two twenty-three thousand two twenty-nine ninety-nine. The only one that I suggested it is a brand new one for seventeen five thirty-two.
The Cody?
Yeah. The only reason I brought that up, took it over, is because we still have that check, right? We don't want to disappear.
In the name?
Good.
We paid, we wrote a check to SIRSA, so that would include it, right?
Yes, that's what I figured on those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the five hundred deductible, the town has to pay that's on the payment to SIRSA.
What did we end up getting for a tractor that was lost three years ago?
Twenty-one thousand one hundred, was it twenty-one thousand one hundred seventy, twenty-one thousand one hundred?
Or a used tractor and brush hog, if they can't find in the sewer line. You have, if I need an insurance claim, you guys, I hope you file it for me.
That, that's, that's what I brought up as.
How did we get twenty-one thousand dollars for a three thousand dollar tractor?
Well, I think what it was, was they went by what it would cost for replacement today, is how they did it. That's kind of like when you have house insurance.
Yeah, which I do.
So, no, but I'm saying, so, you know, what you paid for your house, you know, seven years ago, your replacement cost is going to be a lot higher, so something should happen to your house, you would get a higher premium.
Yeah, but I'm not seeing.
That's kind of like.
I'm really not seeing a vehicle being compared to a house, though, because you have to, I mean, I'm glad for it. Whoever managed to deal twenty-one thousand dollars for that made a great deal.
Yep.
I'm not gonna argue about that.
I'm not gonna argue. I, I'm, it's like a blessing in disguise, and nothing was actually.
As long as we're not carried out in handcuffs, right?
Nope, nothing extra was done, and as a matter of fact, weren't they asking us, like, they wanted us to fish it out of the store?
Well, it's amazing it hasn't been filed.
They, it was my understanding that they had it checked, and they couldn't find it, so I don't know. But anyway, on this, all we did was file the claim on it, when we did the roof for the community center, and then we did this.
Did we get anything for that?
We did. We told you and Bob, and you were gonna look into it.
Thirty-one hundred.
Thirty-one hundred dollars?
For that roof, and this twenty-two thousand.
It's not, it's not the entire roof that I said, and, okay, so the air conditioner's that's here. And it's around there.
Okay, now.
About one, the last time?
Yeah, and I'm probably getting off base on this, but it's been leaking for several years, and we didn't check for black mold, so can that be added in case that's happened?
The inspector did check for everything he said.
We got a certificate on that black mold.
He sent the paperwork, and I believe I put it in your board packet before.
Check it, and check on it.
In the previous board packet, I had put whatever the, whatever they sent me, I had made a copy and given it to everybody.
Well, I make a motion to go with Cody for seventeen.
Now that's, okay, so we're gonna, if the board approves this, and it's plus the mileage, right?
Yeah, three dollars and seventy-two cents a mile.
Unless we can find someone that is really.
To drive to Hembras.
Okay, I'm not driving to Hembras.
I'm not either.
Unless you can talk them into it, free delivery.
Look, we can even get, maybe I could deliver for free. There's a, that's everywhere, though. So this is what it looks like, or is that the used one?
It's a twenty.
It's a twenty twenty-five Kioti. It's a brand new one.
So it's coming with a road guard and a two-way bucket.
Yes.
Okay, did that include, um, the brush hog?
Yeah, the seventeen five thirty-two includes the brush hog and everything. Yeah, it's on the Cody on this list, too.
On the twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
I don't see where it says. There's this loader with a grill guard and forty-eight, forty-eight inch given a bucket.
Okay, go further down.
Rotary loader down here.
Oh, there. I see it. Okay, thank you. See it? Okay. So the actual price was twenty-two six eighty-one, and they gave us a low rate discount of five thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Yes.
So it's seventeen five thirty-two.
Plus mileage for delivery. Estimating around four hundred dollars per delivery.
About ninety-nine miles here and so.
We're looking about three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents in mileage.
And the check is for what amount?
So it's twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars, and then with this, so then this would also cover the five hundred dollars if that's the one?
So it's this, the mileage, the stuff to go, you're looking at two thousand four hundred. Seven thirty-two.
Seventy-five cents? Four seventy-five?
I'm not keeping my phone on yet. Eighteen four hundred.
So I make a motion to go with Cody for the twenty twenty-five.
Ms. Gellner?
Yeah.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorin?
Yes.
Mr. Trejo?
Yes.
There it is, Mr. Romero?
Again. I talked to this guy that Mr. Coca mentioned, his name is Dave. Anyway, he's got a radiator. That's twenty-two thousand dollars for his. And it would also require some electrical work to be done down at the sewer pump. I haven't been able to get a hold of, um, solar the outfit to see if they would charge for replacement, the water we have down there. But he was saying that we are talking with the state about water and wastewater.
Stuff great with color red or rural water.
And until that is straightened out, I don't think we should be looking at buying new stuff until we find out exactly what we're getting. Group, you know what I mean? So that's another way to start the table. The radiator that this company has that's up north, they do have an eighteen-month lease. And at the end of the lease, eighteen months, the equipment is all agglorized. If you want to.
I would like to make a suggestion of whenever we table an item, that we set a date for it to be re dropped to the council. Because it seems like now we table a lot of stuff, and it's gone.
I agree with you.
So if we table this, let's set a definite date that it'll come back up.
Thing is that we need to get a hold of that to
Frank.
To find out, we have what has to be done here. Straighten everything out before we get into. Buy and sell.
No, he, Greg has offered to come and address the board. So if you want me to bring him in on the thirteenth?
Sooner the better. What are you gonna say?
You met with Greg?
Yes.
Yeah, he's willing to come and talk to the board.
Okay.
You want it done on the thirteenth?
Yes.
Will he be available?
I'll check with him. Tomorrow. Can I get a motion to table this till, so then we're gonna table it till the thirteenth?
Motion to table sewer pump items until February thirteenth.
Will that give you enough time to get the information?
Well, we need, we need to talk to Greg first, because he's the one that knows what has to be done.
Okay, so we're not gonna meet with him till the thirteenth, so let's go for the next regular meeting that will give us opportunity to talk with him.
On the thirteenth?
Yeah.
And then?
So the twenty-seventh?
And then do more on the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
So then we're gonna meet with Greg, see if we can arrange it for the thirteenth, and then table the sewer pumps, so you said the twentieth?
Twenty-seventh.
Oh, twenty-seventh.
Mr. Romero, you make a motion?
Yes.
I can go a second.
Did you, did?
Yeah, please second.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorin?
Yes.
Mr. Treille?
Yes.
New resignation, Mr. Thorin?
About Marshall.
Oh, the Marshall, sorry. We can't, we, even with the Marshall, we have to, as we don't know, I mean, we've not had any response to the Marshall. Nothing, not, I mean, the only other suggestion I have is that maybe we try to, uh, look at the ad that we have, and I'm kind of change it. And, you know, maybe that might help. And I have the actual one on the website, but, you know, just kind of, I, I got one from, uh, Telluride. Down somewhere else, I don't have them on me. But I think that's something maybe to revisit the ad, because we're not getting.
Are they listing the, the amount to be paid for the Marshall?
You want me to grab the ad real quick, so you could kind of, maybe if you wanna look at it and add something for?
What I think?
Well, I, I think we should like, maybe even get a, a, a roundabout estimate of what they're paying in Trinidad and Walsenburg.
Oh, don't go La Vida.
No doubt, La Vida, no.
La Vida's high.
Yeah, they are high.
But then we'll be back right in the same situation, right? We can't, we don't have, right?
That's why I'm saying, we need to find out again.
See, and, and, like, with the Marshall, you know, the town, you, also, when they're doing the, I don't know, the interview process, or, you know, it comes with house, what is it, a two-bedroom house? Two, three, I don't know, but, but it has a house on it, and I come to find out the other day, the town had been paying the cable, I mean, the internet on it, and they stuck the town with the utility, with the electric bill, and, you know, those are just things that we need to, as a board, to straighten out in offering this, that we can put that on.
We need to keep the electric on, especially through the winter.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think the town should be paying, I mean, the.
I think everything is on.
The town is getting, offering the house, I mean, the house apart is, is there, but I don't think the town should be paying for the.
Utilities.
Utilities or the internet.
No, because they're getting free room and board.
And that, and that right there is.
That's our incentive, since we're paying so low on payroll, this is our kids' current incentive, because if we tell the guy, what, we're gonna give you eighteen dollars an hour, and the house, and you have to pay all the utilities, I mean, by the time you figure out.
Yeah, but look at what they're paying for house rents.
Oh, I, that's what I was gonna say.
How much the lease are getting paid.
I, I would say the house is enough, forget the utilities. I mean, they could, they could run the utilities.
Or even offer, offer the house and utility, but internet is an extra, that's something that has to be done.
Internet is an extra.
You know, internet, cable, whatever the case may be, that's something that would be on, on the person who.
I don't know, I, I actually believe that the board should review what, uh, um, is being offered to, for a Marshall, and what we're willing to cover as far as utilities, as, I mean, gas alone is expensive.
Well, houses are expensive, too.
And water, and so the town itself needs to change their rates. So that's gonna be a much added expense to the town.
I believe that house has propane, not natural gas. It's just water and sewer there, and then they have two wood-burning stoves, or a pellet stove and a wood-burning stove in the house.
We gotta revisit that now, too.
What, do you have any idea what the utilities are running there? Uh, the electricity, did you say?
The electric, um, not off the top of my head, I can pull up invoice real quick if you want.
The town wasn't paying for the propane, correct?
No, no, we were paying the electric and the internet over there. And that wasn't the agreement, the Marshall was supposed to pay it, for some reason, it was in the town's name, we were supposed to get reimbursed, but that never happened.
And it was left with a bill for like nearly thirty-seven hundred dollars. That, that, those are, I mean, a lot of the issues that we're having to deal with. So if that's something the board wants to take a look at, you know, when considering a Marshall is to revisit the ad and, you know, what we have to offer as far as salary and a house and what comes with it. But I'll say, I don't know the condition of the house, but I do know that it's rent alone is expensive.
Well, at some point, we're going to have to get a town clerk also, and I'm not seeing that the Marshall's house has got to be a Marshall's house whenever there may be a chance to bring in someone to live in it as a town clerk, that has to be done. I mean, it's, we, we should have already have tried to get a town clerk.
So then basically, that, that house that the town has is, can be utilized for any.
Yes. Well, the last word, the last word was just, Ed said it's gotta be the Marshall. But we need someone in the house, a house setting, nothing like that, just deteriorate your eggs so fast. And so it needs somebody in it, for one thing, and we have, we need a town clerk, we need a Marshall, code enforcement with the, uh.
Building inspector?
Code enforcement is a great plus, uh, it's, and that looks like we may be able to get through this, but.
Would, would we pay for services from Trinidad right now?
For what?
For Marshall.
We pay quarterly.
Is it every time they come out?
It's quarterly, right?
Quarterly, so it's running about thirty, this last one was only, I wanna say, twenty-five, twenty-six hundred dollars, but previously it had been roughly forty-five, or, it just depends on how many calls. I wanna say last, um, quarter, it was forty-five hundred, this quarter, it was like.
Every time someone calls, you know, whether it's a dog complaint, whatever, the town is charged for that from the Marshall, right? From the sheriff's department?
I have this on the, uh, lease for the entire year of twenty twenty-four, the town of Aguilar has paid eleven thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And this is from the under sheriff at the sheriff's office.
So what are we gonna do with the Marshall? Do you wanna table that and revisit it? I mean, or do you want her to run the ad she has now?
At the ad is outstanding, all these ads are through the Colorado Workforce Center, so they can be seen through anybody in Colorado, I mean, they've expired in the newspapers, but.
But we're not advertising the amount we're willing to pay?
No, it's just, uh, basically, the only thing on the Marshall's is that, uh, the house is included as part of the salary.
And does it, just, does it include in there, if interested, please call the town hall?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, I mean, it has the email address for Sarah, it has the mailing address.
Well, can we base the payoff of what we've been paying for that?
Eleven thousand?
No, 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 I'm saying for. What did you say?
A month, let's see.
That's quarterly, and she just gave.
Yeah, so this would be quarterly, so.
I, I believe that they have somewhere in the range of like thirty thousand, eighty-two.
I think was what we were.
Like thirty, thirty-two, between thirty and thirty-five in there, and that's with house included.
So can we put that on yet? Advertising that amount, but paid?
Like, you know, lots of what the board wants, I mean.
Have you seen?
We're still gonna figure out what we can afford.
But have you seen the duties for a Marshall? Because the last Marshall seems like he was on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And then we had, eventually had to get another Marshall in here to give him a break, because the town wore him out.
I don't know, the last Marshall I saw was always hanging out with Mark Pano, so I, I don't know, you know, what hours he, he was working, I had a call out to him, and you know, he's like, okay, I'll stay on the line, go ahead, and I go, oh, okay, then, why did I call you? So I wasn't, you know, pleased with that type of service to the community.
Well, if, if we hired a Marshall, and we went off of the basis of in-between of paying him, we won't have to pay Trinidad anymore.
Well, one of the times when I spoke to Navarette, he said that if we get an IGA with the city of, well, with the county, he would provide us with an officer two days a week and eight-hour shift, which would cover the two days for a Marshall to, you know, here to be off.
But in reality, they don't have enough policemen to do what they're doing, they really don't want to sign an IGA with this town. I mean, so it's, they are so understaffed.
Well, I know that, uh, we were, sent an email from, uh, this lady, and she spoke to him, I couldn't get a hold of him, he, you know, I don't know if he's out, or I had one of his deputies call me, but he said, oh, that's about my pay grade, I, you know, I can't answer your questions. So I'm waiting for Navarette to call me back on what, you know, they can offer us, but from what the lady told us, she said that right now, all they can offer is one day a week, three hours. Yeah, I don't know.
How many police cars? We got like three Marshalls vehicles out there.
Yes.
I guess. We need to get rid of some of the extra junk we have laying around here, and we sell Marshall, one of the Marshall's vehicles, which will help us with, uh, the money, it could be sold to anyone who, uh, is licensed or post-certified. You can sell with the equipment in it to a law enforcement agency. We could look into that, because we have three vehicles setting just getting over. And I'm a big, I'm big for every three years turning over your vehicles, so you start getting tax breaks on some of this, other than letting you set the building over here and rot. If we don't have need for it, why do we keep it there?
Okay. So what would you like to do with the Marshall? Gellman, visit the.
I say visit the, the, the ad.
And redo it?
Yeah.
Okay, when we bring it up again? Thirteenth.
Make a motion?
I would say probably the end of the month.
At the end of the month?
The twenty, the.
Twenty-seven.
Make a motion, we revisit it on the twenty-seventh.
A second. Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorin?
Yes.
Mr. Treille?
Yes.
Okay, new items, resignation letter.
I, I know this probably really got everyone excited, uh, it was on there, but it was supposed to be, to speak about resignations. And sadly, I'm not resigned, you're stuck with me until you find another way to get me out of here. I've had, I, I do have a lot of problems with the way that we're doing things as a council, and we discussed quite a bit of what I wanted to say tonight already, so it's like my involvement in Aguilar has always been to better the community by volunteering, starting community events, and involving myself with the American Legion. But most of you know me for inspiring and enjoying effort to bring Aguilar fair government by making it inclusive and transparent to residents, along with the people closest to the town, which means the values around here are golden there, the people who work and pay taxes and volunteer to make Aguilar a great place to live. A three-year fight has had a lot of ups and downs with the government using its power to destroy people that had the nerve to disagree with us, how dare we? Over these years, I have others trying to help against a dictatorship that was run by a very small group, at times childishly turning into threats, acts of violence, attempts to take the rights of people away, using the power they had to discourage family and friends by filing false charges against myself and others, using the felon code enforcement against agents with a firearm to threaten and bruise families publicly, issuing citations that had no basis in reality, slandering people's characters, filing a false restraining order, eighty pages, and that was to keep me off of the seat as councilman the first time. The town lost in court on the, uh, citations that they gave me, and then turned around and, uh, used the ordinances under uh, an emergency clause, later find out that these emergency clauses really only acted for ninety days, then you had to redo it and do it, bring it in as an ordinance properly, and then whenever Bob and I went through the ordinances, three-quarters of our ordinances are done under the emergency clause, so this really needs to come up to where, because you can't take someone to court for an ordinance that's not valid, and it, when we went through the book, largest part of these were not valid due to this emergency clause. This even went as far as after several false citation, the board attached, uh, had problems with me having an RV in front of the house, and as punishment, they passed an ordinance to prohibit a vehicle weighing over seven thousand pounds to depart on a residential street. And this really affected everyone here whenever they'd done that, it was directed at me, but, Monica, you've got several vehicles that are over seven thousand pounds.
I do, and I went with the topic of, uh, conversation at the mercantile about, about my vehicles, so yeah, I'm very aware of that.
Well, and.
But that's not the topic right now.
And that, that was.
Ms. Thorin, let's see, with the subject, read the letter that you're reading to the board, we're listening to you, go ahead.
That wasn't meant for something, for any individual, the way that this was done is emergency clause affected everyone in town, a three-quarter ton truck weighs over seven thousand pounds.
Can we get a copy of that?
I don't care.
Please.
You want right now?
Yeah, she's gonna get it before us, so that we can follow what you're telling us.
Well, I'm taking some of the stuff out, so after we're done, I'll give you the thing, the copy, because I'm not saying part of it, because we've already went through. We went through a period of time in open meetings, employees of the town, friends of the mayor, would publicly attack councilmen and not giving us the right to defend ourselves. But the council didn't do anything. But the council didn't do anything. These were actions of the mayor and the town administrator. And the whole thing was wrong to begin with by not letting someone defend themselves. And again, at that time, my family was insulted and threatened publicly and really enforced to endure lies. I continued to attend meetings where the police, town attorney and council refused to include the people in any decision they made, often doing it in private. Meaning they had regulations against us so we couldn't, uh, speak, we couldn't record, we had no opinion, which we got through with one meeting of the new council when we voted down that, the violations for people's rights. It went to a recall election where I recall. The recall was held, held and I lost by a small number. I paid for a recount, which is another one of the problems that we had. I paid for something. I was, uh, told that the recall count, recount which happened in an hour. I spent, I think, two hundred and seventy dollars. I don't have that room down here. Uh, but state law says that I can have a watcher. I needed a watcher. I made a court request, spent like a hundred and seventy dollars on it. I didn't get the court request. So that turned out to where the, the town actually used its power to punish me because I didn't agree with them. I brought it up to other councils and the mayor, uh, stopped it. He wouldn't let it be discussed, there was no vote done on it. So over a three-year period, the town has forced at least three thousand dollars from through filing false charges, paying for the recount, paying for, uh, you know, my missing word. Oh, a hundred and seventy dollars that they paid, I'll come up with the word here. And then it came into a year and a half of fighting with the council and the mayor to get to where we're at now. The new council in this, in fighting for everyone's right in town, uh, came to where that we agreed to be transparent. We agreed to be inclusive. We, and we as a group represent the people, not a dictator or a mayor who runs everything exclusively. And part of this, I'm talking about really that we need a town clerk. The major problem is really the micromanaging of town hall. Because it seems to me like we're being, we're lying to ourselves and to the people that are here whenever we tell them we're gonna do something and we don't. Or we change our mind in the middle of it and do anything else but what we had planned. This next section I have here is, we talked about it, the brush hog, the insurance, the mower, and how did we get that twenty-two thousand dollar number? We have so many issues that were ignored or dismissed, such as the black mold that you said that you've done the test on it. So that's one of my problems was this slide back here in front of the place where that sewer plate is, that sticks up three or four inches, has for years now. That's a severe tripping hazard that's been brought to the attention of the town several times, yet no one's considering the elderly or the handicap on this. We're responsible if anyone gets hurt in that. We have an AD ramp, a ramp. And the problems with it is we, we have the ramp, but we don't have any handicap parking that we have. Uh, we require other businesses in town to have that. The best place for it would be out here in front where we reserve for the mayor. And, uh, the, the maintenance is using the front area when they could very easily use the back door and use a safe area for the handicap. So it's kind of a request, if maintenance starts working from the back door and we use that area to mark this handicap for van accessible and one spot for a handicap.
On, Mr. Thorn, on that part, SIRS will not allow anybody to park there like all the time to block it because of the garage door being there. That's a SIRS garage.
Garage door, that's, you're speaking of the overhead door. So if the mayor's parking spot was used as van accessible, it would give someone in a wheelchair plenty of room to unload right there. Or someone that has problems where they don't have a wheelchair, but they have to unload through the side door of a van. And then over to the facing the building to the right side of that, if there was a single spot, neither one of these spots would block that door. So we had the opportunity to do that. And this has been brought up before because ladies in the office have started parking on the side. You know, we just, we start things. We come up with the ideas, we talk about it, and then it goes into a black cloud somewhere where the nobody actually follows through with anything. There's nothing wrong with taking care of the elderly and the handicapped here. And handicap parking is a requirement that we're ignoring. And you can leave the center of that open. It would, even one of these spots would block that door. And it's not on here, but we don't have a flag out here. And as a veteran, kind of an insult to the government building doesn't take the time to put an American flag up.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thorn, how long have you been on the council?
Longer than you.
Yeah. How come those things haven't been addressed? Haven't, something hasn't been taken care of.
They have been brought up, but they th- these are things that the council needs to vote on and we need to start following through. The whole thing about this is if we're not gonna do anything as a councilman, that's why I'm coming in as a resignation. And whoever doesn't want to do this, you're supposed to be working for the people here. If you don't want to do that, then resign.
I agree.
You know, so, and that's why I put it in, I put it in as a resignation so that I could go through these things and let you know we're, we're failing at our job.
There we are. And, and you failed last month when you walked out those doors.
Oh, you failed calling me an asshole too. So.
I, I, yeah, with all due respect.
Okay, so you and then. We're gonna go on, wait. Go ahead, Mr. Thorn, finish because we have a long agenda.
I'm trying to get through it. Now we have money coming in. We partially covered a lot of this, the hub funds. They're in a general account, forty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars, sixty-four cents. But now it's commingled. And if we're asked to pay a bill as something, this money is earmarked under CRS forty-three four two oh eight, and it has to be used for roads and projects along that line. Very definite regulations on how we spend this. Yet the money's commingled, so even if you give us an amount of what we have, we can't figure from that where each fund starts and where it stops. Because if, if right now, if we had the numbers of exactly what was in the account and we're trying to work with people to bring them in as code enforcement, we wouldn't know to separate that. So the council's being left in the dark on a lot of these bills. And it's how can we approve the bills? It, it's basic. If you go to write check, the first question is how much money do we have? We don't get this information and this has come up several times, but there hasn't been a remedy to it. I notice now we don't have bills to approve this month, so I guess there wasn't any.
There's a whole list of bills and all the amounts are on there, Mr. Thorn.
And the amount we have in the bank is on there too.
Yes.
Did you not look at your board package?
Yes, and an application there, we've been going through this. I have vacation request. I've got this. And this is coming down here. You say that there's an amount on here that's total amount, right?
There's on the second page of the bills. She lists out what are beginning balances, what checks we have outstanding, and the amount of bills we have to pay and our ending balance.
Okay, right here. And I'm sorry to be in your package.
You know what, there's so many times that it's not in my package. And you saw me now it is. What's time to go through it here is.
You don't have to, I already gave you mine, so if we could move on. There's your.
The point to this whole thing is, is even looking at this right here. This has a beginning balance, an outstanding check, bills to pay. That's good. The ending balance is hundred sixty thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars. Yet we can't go by that number because I just told you forty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-two of it is earmarked for roads alone. So we can't include that.
What are you talking about?
Hub fund you talked about last month. A lot of the hub funds is money that's used for the roads.
We have not received that.
Excuse me?
We haven't received that yet, man.
Yeah, we didn't.
Hold on.
That's the check I picked up for twenty-eight thousand.
But totally for the, totally on this, we have received forty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-two. But it's commingled, and even if it's the number she just gave you, it's commingled with the other amount of funds. And this is money that we have coming in that's really supposed to run the town for this year, yet we're making up for last year with the money. There's nothing, this money is coming in with, I've got a list of, you know, from here, what we've been, eighty-two thousand dollars in property tax, money from bank account closing, twenty-one thousand for the tractor, seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventy-three in sales tax. We have money coming in that comes in every year. But this money that we have to run the town this year is being used on last year's. And somewhere we're gonna have to come up with another hundred fifty-five thousand plus. And we don't know the amount of the plus. So through all this, no matter what numbers were shown, we don't know what's going on. And, uh, see. And I think keeping up with the things going on right here, like the police body cams of things, I'm getting threatened again.
What police body cams? What police body cams?
Well, for the fact that it happened over at, uh, the Mercantile.
But you know, that person pertaining to us, the Mercantile, that's a whole different thing. We need to deal with what's right before us right now.
It pertains to one of our employees.
That's.
The threats that I'm getting and you're trying to play it off like it's nothing, but.
Well, you know what, Vernon? It's never been reported to me that you've been threatened. Mr. Romero, has it been reported to you that he's been threatened?
Has it been reported?
You have you? Have you had a report that you've been threatened? He's been threatened?
This is my time to talk.
No, I'm just asking. But no, this is what I'm saying, Vernon, I, I'm not sure where you're going with this. What is, you know, I mean, you said body cam, there's nobody that's, I know, and this is the first I've heard of it.
Because this isn't discussed anywhere. No one wants to talk about it.
Oh, it's not on Facebook?
And what happened to that, the Mercantile has nothing to do with my job or what's.
Except for, except for you on body cam says that this is all about your job.
Yes. Okay, wait, we're not gonna go there, so finish your letter.
Yeah, I'll finish with it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thorn. Uh, so that points out advertisement for letters of intent. Uh, you all have in your board packages, wait. You have a letter from, um, the attorney that was sent, you emailed to everybody, so I hope that you all had a chance to read it.
You're talking about.
I have a brief review of the email.
Yes. Well, I'll, I'll let him know that, you know, because I have, where's that copy where he's emailed everybody?
And that was part of this letter that I just done is, I don't get a lot of information and I know part of it's because I hope you don't contact me. And that was because of.
This is the part where he sent the email to everybody. And he asked that nobody respond?
Because it'd be breaking the clock, sunshine law?
Correct.
But we put things out and everyone would.
Vernon, let's stick to the subject here, okay? We still have a long list to go. It's already gonna be eight-thirty.
On the international building code?
Yes.
You talked to Trinidad. They use the two thousand eighteen code. So I think we ought to adopt, but to build that international building code for the town.
Do you think the board can approve?
We didn't know what they were using.
The twenty-third.
Well, according to the attorney, he looked online, he said that online it shows there's a nineteen ninety-one, which is incorrect. But we're, we're using the two thousand twelve now, so.
So that's right, because a lot of the services that.
I know, but they're using two thousand eighteen, the San Luis County is. And I thought we were gonna mirror what they're doing. I, I don't see why we can't.
Okay.
So I'm making a motion that we adopt the international building code two thousand eighteen.
Okay, so he's gonna do the resolution. This is what the letter is saying. And it was requested, he reviewed the col- the current building codes that have been adopted by the town and provide guidance on how to update the current code. And then it said, we have been running on the nineteen ninety-one uniform building code. The information provided to me is that the town is currently operating under the twenty-twelve. And then he said again, the board has to determine how it wishes to proceed with, has to have to do an ordinance.
That's why I'm making a motion to adopt two thousand eighteen.
So we do that and the board adopts the twenty eighteen, then I will send this back to Adam so then he can start the process of, of drafting and proposing the ordinance to be read to the board for acceptance.
I make a motion to adopt the twenty eighteen international building code.
So do you have?
But wait, he says no.
Make a motion to have a resolution done up to adopt.
Right.
For twenty eighteen.
Okay, I make a res- I'd motion that we make a resolution to adopt.
But he says no ordinance shall be adopted by any city council of any city unless the same has been previously introduced.
Right.
And that's where he would do.
He does his part, sends it to us, we read it.
Okay.
So you read it and then we proceed with getting the international building code.
So is it the board's wish to go to adopt the twenty eighteen?
Yeah, he made the motion to have a resolution done up to adopt the twenty eighteen building.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Also remember that all these older houses that are in town will not be affected.
I thought they were grandfathered in.
Will not be affected.
Yeah, they won't be, they won't be affected.
Ms. Gellman?
Yeah.
Mr. Romero? Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorn?
Yes.
Mr. Trell?
Yes.
I make a motion. About if we go through this and pick things that we should talk about next meeting? Is there gonna be a?
That's why I said we have so much on our plate that we need to have a second board meeting, we have a regular board meeting twice a month only to get past some of this stuff. What happened to the utility worker?
I didn't show.
So you have an application for, um, should we do the, the next one, maybe go short?
For Derek?
Yes. For, um, yes.
I was going to. My patience is running out. If we could get Derek gone, hard time he told you, or. He has the experience for digging. Won't you? He has the experience to dig sewer, gas, and water like cats. Whereas Richard doesn't have that experience. If we could get Derek on board hard time, won't you hear him?
I don't wanna bring it up, but why was he terminated?
I don't know, I wasn't on the board, and that's not something to be discussed in o- in an open session. But I, well, the reason I'm taking my head is because through, uh, Binsa. Binsa. We have to have a full-time.
Gas worker?
Yes.
Gas operator.
Are you gonna be, that's not gas operator thing there? That says you can, you won't.
That's what he's applying for is the, um, gas department. To be the, um, to be, oh, he already, when he worked before, he was OQ in gas.
But what, what do we gotta pay to get Richard qualified?
We need to get Richard certified for the drinking water for the water license, so that we're not paying somebody else to use their license, when in reality it costs, once their training is over, and what we pay six hundred dollars or something for their license, and the town has the use of that water license.
So we need to do a stipulation that if we're at the town, gonna have them that certified and paid, then they'd have to stay with the town a certain amount of time, they can't just.
That is another thing that the town needs to address. That once the, the town pays for their water, you know, for their license, they have to, you know, stay and work with the town for a certain period of time. Instead, if you get your license and they need both.
Well, it seems a lot of this stuff's been neglected for a long time.
Oh, there is a lot that's been neglected, but anyway, so Derek is applying for the gas department.
So what that says, it shows utility.
So should we sue me a little bit, so? How him?
So we can talk about it?
If he's not, then we can just move on and get him on the other side.
Yes.
Okay. And that's the board's decision?
The thirteenth or the twenty-seven?
The thirteenth. He called yesterday when I was there, checking if we had, if somebody that was getting ready to OQ.
I motion to table this application for Mr. Mark, until the February thirteenth.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorn?
Yes.
Mr. Trigill?
Yes.
Lighting in front of town hall, Mr. Romero.
Let's take that. It's not an emergency.
Thirteenth or the twenty-seventh? Just tell him what you want.
How hard would it be?
Hopefully, we could just correct you.
How hard is it to get the light to come to me? How, how much time, or what does it require?
Um, are we, like a motion sensor, maybe? Can we put that?
Solar powered motion sensor.
Right. If we address that now, then we don't have to table it.
Right, that's addresses it.
So we need a solar powered what?
Motion, you want a motion detector or just a light?
Motion detector.
Okay.
So we need to give an estimate?
They're running anywhere from twelve to forty dollars. I've seen them for twelve bucks.
Is our maintenance capable of installing?
Rich's maintenance rights?
I don't think there's any electrical work to it.
Not at the source.
Yeah.
Take Rich a couple hours to put it up.
And make a motion that we purchase it, get it put out.
Second.
That's one we got checked off.
Ms. Gellman?
Yeah.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorn?
Yes.
Mr. Trigill?
Yes.
Town property next to the ball field.
I went up there looking around, and there is a bunch of trash up there.
Rich then, they were dumping a lot of trash. I haven't been by there, but Rich said there was.
We need, we need to put signs up saying, no dumping, or seal the damn thing up one way or another. He said dig a damn trench all the way around. But if you're gonna get hurt, you do that.
Right, throw it in the, in the trench.
Yeah.
I say, put a motion camera. Just a small one, like for a student.
I think there should be, what do they call those cameras, like they use the hunters? The trail cameras, and on that way, whoever's dumping the trash, because that shouldn't be happening. You know, and then at least, you know, we get a make, a model of a vehicle and maybe a license plate.
We already have trail cams, so.
Where? That's it, so. Trail cams for the ball field. Is it the ball field or across?
It's where the, where the motorcycles go.
Where they have the bonfire.
Is there a place we could put them up so that, because if you strap them low, people see them.
I think you can put high enough on that one telephone pole up there with the jack, and it'll detect the motion. Just like the hunters do up in the trees.
Yeah, but you can wing it down to where the area you want done, so that would be a good idea to get some type, something there.
We wanna see a climbing ladder.
Who? I go woo.
They just hate. I make a motion that we put trail cams up on the pole there and see what happens.
That the town already has?
Town already owns four.
Okay.
We need to put no dumping signs up also.
Oh, yeah, no dumping signs, good.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorn?
Yes.
Mr. Trigill?
Yes.
In the meantime, who do, what are we gonna do by cleaning up the trash?
Can we schedule a cleanup day?
Uh, well.
Man, there's a lot.
I will try, I will call, I had talked to Derek about if they will donate a dumpster so we can have a cleanup day. I think Donna and I had talked about that even before, about having a cleanup day.
Is, is there, what type of materials out there?
There is, uh, plastic bags, there's a lot of wood. Metal. Tires.
Somebody just cleaned their yard.
At one point, we used to have bonfires here, can we make an offer to the fire department, let them use it for training? Or a lot of it before we dump it.
We'll have to get the tires out of there for sure.
Yeah, get the tires out, but.
But yeah, a controlled burn would be. Do we have a dump truck?
Yes.
We can have a, a, a tractor pretty soon with a bucket in the front.
You gotta bag.
Load that truck up. Huh?
That calls a sign.
Load the truck, load the truck up with the trucks.
He's gonna use his phones with the tires.
Tires you have to dispose of separately.
Yeah, but who's gonna do it?
What do they charge to?
Yeah, Trinidad will take the tires, but you gotta pay a certain amount for each tire.
I think, what is the, they charge it to dump?
It is like three dollars a tire, I think.
They're a lot of tires?
Yeah, they've got a lot of tires out there in Trinidad that they dump. Well, I don't know, I don't know how many tires.
Be sure.
And are you gonna consider putting a fence back up around the property or not?
Did they use any of the fence?
Yes, if somebody.
It was just one wire running all the way across from pole to pole.
But somebody, you know, not from pole, from T-pole.
Do we have fencing available, like maybe?
And a lot of the T-poles are missing, some wires missing.
You think people just took it?
Yeah, yeah.
I feel the same way, sir.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Well, hopefully the cameras will help.
So we're going on to the resolution? Yes, let's go on to resolution twenty twenty-five. Dash one, one to adopt the budget for twenty twenty-five.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash one comma one.
A second there.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorn?
Yes.
Mr. Trigill?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one dash two. To set mill levy. Resolution levying general property taxes for the year twenty twenty-four to help to freight across the government for the town of Aguilar, Colorado for the twenty twenty-five budget year, whereas the Board of Trustees of the town of Aguilar has adopted an annual budget in accordance with the local government budget law on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and whereas the amount of money necessary to balance the budget for general operating expenses is two hundred and thirty-four thousand fifty-eight dollars and forty-one cents, and whereas the amount of money necessary to balance the budget for bonds and interest is zero, and whereas the amount of money necessary to balance the budget pursuant to twenty-nine dash one dash three oh one and twenty-nine dash three oh two, one point five for capital expenditures is zero, and whereas the net total taxable assessed valuation for the town of Aguilar is certified by the county assessor as two million three hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and ten dollars. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the town of Aguilar, Colorado, that, that purpose of meeting all general operating expenses of the county of Aguilar during the twenty twenty-four budget year, therefore it is hereby levying a tax of eleven point two two-five-one mills upon each dollar of the net total taxable assessed valuation of all taxable property within the town for the year twenty twenty-five. That for the purpose of meeting all bonds and interest of town of Aguilar during the twenty twenty-five budget year, there is levied tax of zero mills upon each dollar of the total valuation or assessment of all property within the town of Aguilar, adopted this twenty-third day of January twenty twenty-five.
How much does, um, eleven point two-five-one increase your tax? Anybody have a dollar figure?
I don't.
What are we getting now?
Also, a reminder that we will in March revisit, you know, as needed, like March, July, the budget, you know, to make the adjustments needed. So that's why next year, we'll have a balanced budget.
That figure from the attorney? The eleven point two-five-one?
No.
Who come up with that figure?
The assessor's office. They sent you, you know where it says two million three hundred and forty-four, four, ten? That was the people doing it.
Can you say something?
Oh.
Did you answer Mr. Romero's question?
Yeah.
Can we get a motion to accept the resolution twenty twenty-five dash one two to set mill levies?
I motion to accept the resolution twenty twenty-five dash one to set mill levy.
Second.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Now I'm gonna be violated at my house.
Mr. Romero? Mr. Thorn?
Yes.
Mr. Trigill?
Yes.
Approval of mills.
Question, where? Why are we still paying Mr. Torres and then paying Diamond?
It sounds like three thousand dollars.
The one for him was stoned.
So the, if you measure Ken Torres' arrectory for this, he did two arrectory permits recently, and then I haven't seen anything he's doing for the all of them.
And you do have an actual bill from Diamond, right?
Yep, I have it here if you'd like to see it. And I break the, yeah, I have that bill.
Also MGM excavation, why are we paying that?
Because they've been on hold since, um, March.
Yeah, so it's a back bill, look, we go.
Yes, it is.
No questions.
No? And while we're on the subject of bills. And while we're on the subject of bills, I need the board's approval to, well, I met with SGM, and they want the town to start making a payment agreement with them, or to start making payments to pay back the one hundred and fifty five thousand dollars that we owe them.
How close are we to them coming back to work orders still?
They already listed the work orders, our issue is CEP, getting them paid. And there's a possibility CEP may not come back, but CEP pretty much has been completed, you know, I mean, has done a lot of their work, but they won't get the full amount, there's gonna be a retention fee. And so we will get the pay order, I will look at it with some bills. Anna and I have to go over those to see what's owed and not owed, and whatever payments need to be. And then it goes to Adam, and then Adam can send it to Jennifer, and then Jennifer checks it for USDA. And then they will approve it for USDA to pay. And then with with SGM, they've agreed, I said we would make a payment of ten thousand dollars. And then after that, we can make a payment monthly. But
Have you got the payment figured out monthly?
As, and the reason for that is because I have a call to Cersei trying to see, you know, with insurance coverage. So with that, if, you know, we can get money, you know, reimbursement for some of this, uh, the loss of the hundred and fifty five or misplacement, whatever it was, then we may not have to pay.
Yeah, we get them come back.
Yeah, and then we, you know, once we do, but wait, if we get all that paid, then we can maybe get our hundred and bills back too. If Cersei, you know, whatever coverage the town has with Cersei.
Yeah, we need to get that started, yeah.
So if the board approves that, um, Stephanie can send a check out with the bills tomorrow?
Oh, I know what I want, Ms. Gellner.
Yes.
The scope updated comments last meeting that there's some online bills that are paid.
Yes.
Are they listed here?
Yep, so anything that says an E, it's electronic, so some of them are payroll, debit card. But some of the online bills would be.
He pays the taxes through that, right?
Yeah, so like the, I'm trying to find one.
Hey, roll this, list those type Bs, let it all be electronic.
Yes.
So like Ken Torres, that would be a check because it's under his name. On the back page, A and T, AT&amp;T, that is a online bill. And right now we're paying for about eight, nine lines that haven't been in use for several years, so I'm working with AT&amp;T to try to get a credit back through all of them. Blackberry this time was paid with a debit card just because it was two dollars and eighty two cents. City of Walthamburg is paid online, Colorado Department, that's our state tax, that's our payroll.
You don't have to walk along the last.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Once you said something like.
Something else that we need to address is we don't, do not pay Walthamburg until like a check will go out tomorrow. Walthamburg is charging us
Two hundred and two dollars monthly because we've been late on all the bills.
We don't pay till after our board meetings.
I don't see if we can forego the monthly because we don't have our meeting teleported Thursday. I already talked to CCOM yesterday about it and know we can pay ahead, but they won't like wait for the monthly for the reason.
So what about changing our meetings to the first of the month?
That's, well, I think, you know, so the pay period will change in order to avoid those late charges. That's a lot of money if you consider, you know, what, two hundred and seventy dollars?
Just for the one dollar. So I mean, the majority of them are due by the fifteenth, so if we can have a board meeting for the fifteenth, so they can get there in time.
When you get the bill from, oh wait, for a minute, don't hold it yet. When you get the bill from Walthamburg?
Walthamburg, it comes out at the beginning of the month and it's due by the twenty first, so.
Is the town still making up the difference?
Yes.
Yes, that's another, that, no, that is, that is a part that we have to do, the study, we have to do. I made, I didn't log on to their meeting, but they were having some kind of increase and decrease. But the town is picking up the difference on the gas, and it's been doing it for several years already. And the town cannot afford that kind of burden.
No.
Same thing with the water. Same thing with, we're talking about the water taps, the sewer taps. The town charges a certain amount for a water tap, but they don't charge the installation. And when I looked at the communities surrounding us, one town charges five thousand dollars for the water tap itself and two thousand dollars for a connection fee. Yeah, and they do the same thing for sewer, and they all have a connection fee, and the town of Aguilar doesn't have any of that. So I don't see where the town benefits from because it costs money to, there's no connection fee. And that's another item that needs to be addressed.
Well, I know that. In around two thousand one, I think it went up to six thousand five hundred dollars for sewer and water tap. And that was voted by council.
When?
In about two thousand one, two thousand two.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure if it's SGM that did a water study like three or four years ago, and it was given to the town and nothing was done with it. But we are so behind on our water rates compared to the, all the surrounding communities that they did the study on.
Whenever somebody say that, I come in, I bought a water tap, right, you bought three thousand? What does it, what does it involve to start a water tap for someone for three thousand?
They have to put the meter.
Meter, the line from the main to the meter is the meter pit.
And the line into the house?
No, the customer doesn't line into the house.
But I mean, you go from the street to the meter.
From the main to the property lane. Main, yeah, main to the property lane, we install the meter, meter pit, all that, and then we have a little tap off of that, and then the customer has to connect from there and take it through their property.
But I don't know, but the town couldn't do the connection on the other side at all?
We would do from the main to the property lane.
But I mean, like, build a customer to install that line.
From the main to the, to our own house, is that?
Yeah.
See, and then the town stops at a certain point.
Right, I understand that, what I'm saying is that if somebody wants a meter installed, we could install it but charge them if they want it, an additional from that meter to the house. I mean, because they're, because I've seen where they've messed with the meters. And you mess with that meter and on the other end it ends up getting broken.
And see, they have no business messing with any type of meter because that is town property, and that's that's a serious offense.
But I'll give you an example, they moved my meter on my house out in, to the front of my property. Okay, they did a crappy job, but I had a leak on my side. I went to fix it, the town side fell apart. So that's what I'm saying is if, maybe changing that just a little bit as to putting the, the tie in on that.
But that's where Vernon said, when you, when we get into that type of, you know, that presents a liability to the town, but, you know, I'm not a plumber, so I'm not, you know.
Well, then maybe the building or the inspector should inspect that line once it's installed, from the meter to the house. I mean, that's part of the plumber's job anyway, right?
Well, that's, yeah, that's the plumber, that's not our, that's my meter.
It would be inspected before they can have, you know, the water turned on by their plumber. I mean, by the plumbing inspector after their plumbers have fit out.
Also, we had to have an emergency plumber come out. Right after Christmas, the sewer was going in the house. It was coming up through the commode, it was coming up through the drains, bathroom. He did, he went and he did like thirty three feet maybe, that he fed by hand the line, and then it just stopped, so then he had to use his machine and he fed out to the sewer meter, and that's the one that Rich and Greg tagged. But there's an issue there, there's a break or something in the line, we won't know the actual issue until it's dug up, and we need to have it fixed because the sewer is, when it backs up, not only does it go in the house, but it's on the ground and it's bubbling, oh. It was awful.
One of the right. Our water heater, where's the bill today?
I haven't got it on there yet because I have the invoice, I have them see, and they already picked the, the library picked their half of it, so. And that should be on the next bill, I'm just waiting on the invoice.
I want the board to know that Frank Rawhouse installed this thing.
Yes, thank you, Frank, we appreciate you, and thank you for helping him, Mr. Romero.
What are you going to do with the old water heater?
When they haul the tires, they can haul the water heater.
He's willing to holler anything, but I didn't want to ask, so I mean, I know what happened.
John Paul stole the.
Here's a ticket for free.
Who?
What, will they come pick it up?
No, but you might charge him if he comes and picks it up, but I mean, you could just take it down there in a truck, he'll, he'll take it.
Yes.
He takes a lot of metal, he takes scrap metal.
And this fridge is also not working, I mean, I mentioned that that was okay.
To haul it away?
This one out, and I don't know what happened to the stove, if the old stove, if it's still at the center, but I mean, he's willing to make it, he's are okay with it.
The old stove at the center is, is working, but it belongs to him.
Oh, okay, well, I will not touch that.
Yeah.
So are we going to motion to approve the ten thousand dollar check? In the bill?
Or we need approval of the check and then the bills hold together?
If you can, Stephanie.
A motion to, what'd you think?
And that's to approve the bills and the ten thousand to SGM.
So, I went over when you brought up the water heater, and I went over to look at the size before I brought the board those bits. And Lee and tell me that it wasn't leaking anymore.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorne?
Not the water heater, the water, no, she said it's not leaking anymore.
Yes.
Cause she said whatever they fix, they fix it, considered as a thing fix.
No, that's not true because my wife told me that the other day it was leaking.
Okay, and I'll get back with her because she told me it wasn't.
And when I went in there, I think Tuesday, Wednesday, there was a bucket there, and I looked and it was empty, but I knew it might have been leaking an evaporator. What was going water meter?
What is, what is this thing?
So we have a water meter that needs, that needs to be connected. And we don't have anybody to do it, so in order to show that, you know, it does present a hardship on the town, and we don't, we don't have anybody to do it, so they. Who he can send? They?
No, so this, I called, I tried to contract with, let's see if friend of dad would contract with us to do the water meters. We tried to, plumbers and stuff, so friend dad, nobody would come out, so I was given this number by a
MGM?
From Denver.
Colorado.
So this is a company out of Denver, they're the only ones that are willing to come out here and install a water meter, and that's the price to do it.
And that's a no, and that was the part where.
Sorry, this was also just for them to come and do the work, they would have to use our equipment and we would have
And our, our.
The parts for it. Yeah, so I mean, I know we have some people that are pushing for their heater, so we got a quote, but this is what it's gonna be.
And I know that, and Vernon had brought that up before, but I know that Derek said that he would do it on the weekends and he would charge
Twenty bucks an hour.
Twenty dollars an hour to install it.
Yeah.
But.
Where's this made at?
Or is this out of, just right out of the town? But there, see how much even right there, we're, you know, I mean, they're gonna travel from Denver and, but still, the town is losing because they have the parts, you know, that they have to pay for.
And like Arlinda said, we're only charging three thousand, and city limits six thousand out of, out of, so without their mileage, I thought it was forty seven hundred to just put the meter in, but we still have to pay for the parts, and I believe Rich had called to get a quote for the parts, and I don't think that they've gotten that to him.
I would go with. Could we contract with Derek just to do that one job for now?
Well.
My question is, is the liability, he doesn't have any liability insurance, so as just a contractor, he'd have to have liability insurance. I thought, can we hire him part time as a part time employee to do things like that, so that he would be covered under our insurance?
An on-call employee partner?
Well, he has a job Monday and Friday, so any like installing meters, it would have to be done on the weekends, and he said he was fine doing that. He also said that his son would be willing to force with him as a spotter for twenty dollars an hour as well.
So could we do it like a, like a part-time, part-time, like on-call part-time, I mean, be covered by the insurance?
We, with Marty, I mean, it's on-call as needed, there was no set hours, I thought, wasn't, there wasn't any set hours, I thought something about twenty hours.
He said work, it would take maybe a weekend to do it with the two of them?
He said probably two to three days, one day to dig and then to install everything, one to two days depending on the weather, which the way the weather is going, that might be. But honestly, I'm out of options of trying to find anybody to change meters.
And I know the MGM is having an issue because, you know, coming out, they said they were really busy and that, but I know they're owed a lot of money, so.
I think we gotta go with Derek.
An on-call part-time?
So, okay, then we can go back, revisit this.
As needed.
As we did.
You could go back, revisit this, right, and you can hire him part-time?
Well, that's what I was mentioning, but you kept shaking your head.
He told me he was putting in for the gas operator.
But that's not what.
Well, and basically whoever does, like Rich, if he wants to do water, then whoever else we hired needs to be willing to get certified.
They do all of it.
And Rich is gonna get gas certified too, right?
So, I mean, we need one to do water, one to do gas or something, I mean, and I don't think it's depend, I don't think we should leave it up to the employees to decide what they wanna do, the board would make the decision. But so basically, I was under the impression that Derek had applied and was coming, willing to come back full time, but he didn't show up, so I don't know what happened with that. But worst case, maybe he'd still be willing to do the part-time.
I would say on-call part-time.
Or somebody could just get a hold of him and sit these doors, either way, for the full time or just part-time.
And then that way, he's, he does.
As needed.
As in twenty five days.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if they make the motion on him doing that.
Did part-time, yeah.
And as needed. Tempor, and as needed, or-
As needed, part-time.
Then if you wanna make a motion on that, and then we contact him, and if he accepts it, then we're good to go with it, if not, then I don't know.
But he's covered for any liability is the issue.
Well, I'd make a motion that we hired Derek on those terms, um, part-time as on-call.
He already has some kind of guidance.
If he's interested, though.
If he's interested, I mean, let's do this, and then, yeah, then we won't have to go through this again.
Well, I talked to him and he said he wasn't, this is, before this was, at the kitchen.
Well, yes, and this just happened, like, I believe last week he brought that out, yes, and we were under the impression he was willing to put that. Anytime from what I got from him, but I, I don't know what happened. And then would he need to, um, if he accepts, he needs to do the drug and alcohol test and background check.
Right.
A good motion, um, about twenty dollars an hour?
Right, yes.
Uh, Mr. Romero, Ms. Guinan?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Trill?
Yes. I make another motion? That the town boarding, or trustees have meetings the first week of the month?
The week just decided then.
Well, we didn't make a motion.
Because we're, well, we wanna do two meetings so that we can cover all that we need to, all the changes that need to happen, you know, with, uh, water, with the taps, with, uh, also he's looking into, that's where this building code thing for, uh, the zoning and that, for fronts. He's looking into that too, but until the board decides where they're at with this.
So we don't have to make a motion for that?
We already did.
For meetings?
So we, we agreed to the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday, for right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're good, we have utilities and is that where, when on your? And meters there. You were just adding stuff, um, I have a vacation request that, um, I put, to add to your package. Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
We are on vacation requests?
Yeah.
A motion to approve it?
Okay.
Ms. Guinan?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Trill?
Yes.
Okay, SGM, they have lifted their, uh, not their non-stop order for work. And like I said earlier, we don't know, once we get that check to CEF, we'll see if they're gonna come back. But they will do a walkthrough, hopefully now in February. And once they do that, work should resume upon. And once that's done, we can apply for gold grants to start on the water source. And with that, if nobody has any questions, can I get a motion to adjourn? Not everybody all at once.
Motion to adjourn.
I just contacted Derek, the, uh, this lady, because drug broke down, we'll, uh, call you in the morning.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Ms. Guinan?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Trill?
Yes.
I am going to send to everybody-
That was it, guys.
I don't answer it, but I'm going to send everybody a copy of the, uh, prices for the taps and stuff like that. So that we'll be knowledgeable, plus, uh, I gave everybody different organizations from different communities in, in the town of Colorado, I mean, the cities of Colorado, so that we can take it apart, or decide what we're gonna do about cameras and stuff.
So you did look some up, huh?
I gave it to, oh, you weren't there, I gave it to the board to look at.
Is that what you pulled my stuff?
I didn't, we'll get you a copy. You have it. Remember, we were gonna review all the cameras, but we didn't have a, a force survey? Yeah, but don't answer, no, I said don't answer, but I'm gonna send you what, my, for, um, all the caps and everything, and all the money, the cameras, uh, matters that we can ask for all the other, um, uh, for the water. Now, we're gonna have to, gas, gas, if you want to know them. Yes, sir. Just bring your receipt, sir.
Get those.